Hi there, Tom. Okay, well, good afternoon. Just, and thank you so much, Diane, especially my favorite books in Scripture, and I'm not using it today. But we are talking about some common themes, of course. Just a quick reminder of what the URL in the corner is for. It gets you to a resource page that I prepared with links to stuff that I'll be talking about and other resources I think are worth knowing about. It's by no means comprehensive. I'll show it again at the end of this time. Scan it with your phone's app to capture it in your web browser. If you've been to a restaurant lately, you know how to do that. David Kelce alerted me last night that the results of the 2023 Yale Survey on Climate Change in the American Mind is available. I had not seen it when I Googled for it last week, so I added it to the resource page. But the changes between the 2022 one that I cited and this one are rather small. In last night's Bible study, we talked about the first of four contrasting realities we might be bringing to this conference, that is grief and hope. These are not opposites but complements. It's hard to find realistic hope without working through our grief over the present state of creation and allowing that grief to propel us forward with God's help into courageous action, action that brings us hope for the future of our world, our families, and ourselves. This afternoon, I want to talk about a second pair that might appear to be opposites but are complementary, and that is poverty and wealth, or to put it more concretely, poor and rich people. This is one contrast the Bible says a great deal about. In fact, while some people might think the Bible is about the afterlife, it actually says very little about it, nearly nothing in the Old Testament where I live. But it says a great deal about the realities of this life, and economics and poverty and wealth are a fundamental reality that affects everyone. Here's a familiar saying of Jesus in the Gospel of Luke, and I'll read it. "Someone in the crowd said to Jesus, 'Teacher, tell my brother to divide the family inheritance with me.' But he said to him, 'Friend, who sent me to be a judge or arbitrator over you?' And he said to them, 'Take care; be on your guard against all kinds of greed, for one's life does not consist in the abundance of possessions.' Then he told them a parable: The land of a rich man produced abundantly, and he thought to himself, 'What shall I do, for I have no place to store my crops?' Then he said, 'I will do this: I will pull down my barns and build larger ones, and there I will store all my grain and all my goods, and I will say to my soul, 'Soul, you have ample goods laid up for many years; relax, eat, drink, and be merry.'" But God said to him, "You fool! This very night your life is being demanded of you, and the things that you have prepared, whose will they be?" So it is with those who store up treasures for themselves but are not rich toward God. Let's examine what this is about. Unlike other passages of Scripture, this one does not speak directly about wealth sharing. In fact, the scene begins with a person who thought Jesus might be interested in equitable wealth distribution and wanted Jesus to instruct his brother on the subject, which Jesus refused to do. It also through the land, physical constraints on the food will vanish, yet the people must still adhere to moral boundaries, rules governing the land, the planting and harvesting of fields, sharing of food, and even the treatment of animals. These rules follow the same principle as the manna did. There are many others, but here is one example from the book of Leviticus. "When you reap the harvest of your land, you shall not reap to the very edges of your field or gather the gleanings of your harvest; you shall not strip your vineyard bare or gather the fallen grapes of your vineyard; you shall leave them for the poor and the alien." Much later, apostle Paul quotes the passage about equitable manna to the church in Corinth, asking them to give generously to other communities that are struggling. First, here in 2 Corinthians 8, he tells them about the churches in neighboring Macedonia who have been generous. Then he reminds them of Jesus's own self-giving generosity toward humanity, saying, "Though he was rich, yet for your sakes he became poor, so that by his poverty you might become rich," spiritually, that is. And finally, he cites the manna story to describe the self-giving equality expects from the Corinthian community. "For I do not mean that there should be relief for others and hardship for you, but is a question of equality between your present abundance and their need, so that their abundance may also supply your need, in order that there may be equality. As it is written, 'The one who had much did not have too much, and the one who had little did not have too little.'" So this is exactly how Jesus was saying that the rich man became a fool, by hoarding food that it turned out would not help him in the least. Content to relax, he declined to benefit anyone else with the riches he gained. So Jesus called him not rich toward God, nor was he rich toward others. He failed to see how vulnerable and how connected his life was. Western Christians often struggle with the paradoxes of being relatively wealthy. Even if our bank accounts look nothing like those of Jeff Bezos and Bill Gates, most of us are here in part because we have the leisure not to work for a few days, leisure to travel, to consider something beyond how we will eat and clothe ourselves. So when we encounter criticism of wealthy people in Scripture saving up, it might make us uncomfortable. What does it mean for us to be rich toward God? Even though Jesus' parable about the rich fool doesn't mention the poor directly, Scripture does deal directly with wealth and poverty many, many times, as you know. The orphans, widows, the poor, and the aliens that Scripture speaks about so frequently are shorthand for everyone in the society who is economically disadvantaged and therefore vulnerable. Here are just a few well-known passages about economic justice, both divine and human, and here are some more. One time, I was going to speak at a church in New Jersey, and when I received the publicity they had sent out, they had entitled my class "What the Bible Says About Climate Change." Maybe it was meant to be provocative, but still, I had to point out that the Bible doesn't say anything about climate change. Its writers didn't know about it. It didn't exist until we started building burning fossil fuels. The Bible doesn't talk about toxic waste, dioxins, coal ash, microplastics, PFAS, or any of that. It does talk about deforestation and famine and greed, but not about the pollution in the modern sense, and certainly not climate change and the havoc that it wreaks on the poor. I told them that, and they took it rather well. We in the church have many scriptural and theological tools for talking about care for God's creation, beginning with Genesis and at many points throughout Scripture. And we have scriptural tools for talking about social justice. When we make the connection between these two, then we are talking about environmental justice. This passage from the prophet Ezekiel during the time of the Babylonian oppression is Scripture's most straightforward depiction of environmental injustice. It comes just after the prophet hears that Jerusalem has been destroyed by the Babylonian army. He grieves, but he doesn't blame Babylon, because he believes that the fault lies with his own people and specifically with leaders who caused their national life to crumble from within. These verses use a metaphor of a flock in which the stronger sheep have no regard for the weaker ones. Ezekiel says, "Is it not enough for you to feed on the good pasture, but you must tread down with your feet the rest of your pasture? When you drink of clear water, must you fowl the rest with your feet? And must my sheep eat what you have trodden with your feet and drink what you have fowled with your feet?" The strong sheeps, thoughtless actions, trampling the land and fouling the water, may seem at first glance to be a violation of the earth, but is even more a violation of the neighbors who depend on it for food and water. Ezekiel knew nothing of modern forms of pollution, of how far modern people would go to place factories and power plants right in the neighborhoods of the poor among us, poisoning their air, and build highways that cut poor neighborhoods in two, polluting them with exhaust fumes, and blow up mountains, destroying vegetation and the streams providing water to people in Appalachia in their search for the last seam of coal. Yet every one of these violates both the earth itself and those who live upon it and depend on its health. Pope Francis, in his 2015 encyclical, La Dato C, put it succinctly. "A sober look at our world," he says, "shows that the degree of human intervention, often in the service of business interests and consumerism, is actually making our earth less rich and beautiful, ever more limited and gray, even as technological advances and consumer goods continue to abound limitlessly. We seem to think that we can substitute an irreplaceable and irretrievable beauty with something which we have created ourselves." Humans have found myriad ways to make the world all but uninhabitable to the poor. Beyond the many local pollutions, like the lead smelting we see here that poisoned a whole Peruvian village high in the Andes, we see dramatic effects of climate change: flooding in Pakistan, devastating hurricanes in the Caribbean, droughts in Central America that drive desperate farmers to our borders. If we are going to be rich toward God, environmental justice must be a major part of what we do and support, not just by feeling guilty, but by taking steps to connect with people working in the U.S. cities where environmental justice is lacking and in Africa, Asia, or Central and South America. Everyone in the world shares a single atmosphere, but per capita emissions from North America, Europe, Russia, and Japan far exceed those from Africa, South America, and most of Asia. Richer nations industrialized and began burning fossil fuels longer ago and continue to burn more today. There was a compelling column, maybe some of you saw it, in the New York Times yesterday by David Wallace Wells about how we put a price on carbon. He pointed out that past and present carbon emissions continue to affect us well into the future, and by that measure, the U.S., not China, is the number one polluter. It's well-known that the global north is responsible for a whopping 92% of excess greenhouse gases, yet the impact of climate change is much heavier in nations that are least responsible for its causes, often nations that are poor and closer to the equator and coasts. While the rich countries that have caused the crisis have the money to adapt, the poor countries do not, often because of histories of colonialism that left them depleted. One of the challenges facing the annual UN climate summits is the $100 billion the rich countries promised in 2009 to pay annually to a green climate fund to help developing nations shift to renewable energy and adapt to climate change. So far, the European Union has given far more to this fund than our country has, but the total gifts have lagged behind what was promised. Now, in addition, the UN has established a loss and damage fund to help pay for the destruction that poorer nations have already endured. On a national and international scale, fully paying suffering nations for the damages we have inflicted is only right. It's a better use of American resources than building bigger barns for ourselves, because lifting people out of danger anywhere helps people everywhere. While very few of us here will participate directly in these global initiatives, we do have many opportunities to educate ourselves about ways that we can practice environmental justice in our own communities. I hope that you are already plugged into such networks, Presbyterian and otherwise. But just in case you would like more help in this area, let me put in a couple of plugs. I told Mark last night that today's session will be a commercial break, and here goes. This is one, not the commercial break. Ten years ago, when I wrote Inhabiting Eden, environmental justice took up only one of nine chapters in which I tried to introduce for Christians who weren't at that time necessarily thinking about it, what our faith has to say about how we treat God's creation and the others living in it. It wasn't that environmental justice was new, but it wasn't as much in the general discourse as it is now. This book continues to be read, as Bruce so pointedly said last night. It's available here at Masonetta, along with the Leader Guide and a workbook. If you're interested in it but are attending from elsewhere, it's available from me or from Westminster John Nux or elsewhere. I guess that was a commercial break. If you want the Leader Guide or workbook, you can get them from Amazon, but they're expensive there. Just contact me directly or go to my website, inhabiting-eden.org. Be sure to use the dash. Since that study is 10 years old, I was really happy last year when PW Presbyterian Women invited me to write the Horizons Bible Study for 2024 to 25 on environmental justice, and this is one of the commercial breaks. Bruce also pointed this out last night. We don't have cover art for it yet, but you should be seeing it by the spring. The good people at Horizons will hope that it will be broadly adopted in churches next year. You can help make that possible by watching for it and introducing it to your congregations. Bruce and Betsy Ensign George of Presbyterian Women have already been collaborating on this. If you're interested in making sure you find out about the study when it comes out, please come by that table over there and put your name and email address on the list, and I'll make sure that you receive information when it's available. Or if you're attending virtually, please email PEC and ask them to put your name on the list. I want to quickly preview what this study concerns. Like all Horizon studies, it has nine lessons. There are, first, an overview of environmental justice from a Christian perspective; second, land justice, especially as it pertains to U.S. history and the country's present relationship to native tribes; third, food justice, particularly as it impacts African-American farmers and food sovereignty around the world; fourth, water justice, access to safe, clean drinking water, which is problematic in many communities, as we've been hearing, even in the U.S.; fifth, air quality, especially for neighbors of severe air polluters; sixth, climate change and its close relationship to more local forms of environmental injustice and racism; seven, economic climate justice and our global commitments as wealthy countries to assist poorer nations' climate preparedness; eight, intergenerational climate justice, which I will talk more about tomorrow; and last, a conclusion imagining the world that we are seeking to bring about, a world that supports all its people and creatures. I hope this study will inspire people to make sure that the ways that we address climate change always protect justice for the poor. And now is the second commercial. So, so much of what happens between the rich and poor globally is beyond our reach as individuals and churches, but there is still a great deal that we can do on a smaller scale. And I want to give you just one example of how we in the U.S. can work as partners to leaders in the Global South. Back in 2015, I received a surprise email from a man in Kenya, the Reverend Tom Ochuka, and he's actually attending this meeting virtually today. He was pastor of five very small congregations of the Africa Inland Church near Kisumu by Lake Victoria in western Kenya. Here he is with his presiding bishop, Philip Osena. They are Loo, the same tribe as Barack Obama's father. Tom had learned that I was going to be presenting at the Presbyterians for Earth Care meeting that year in Montreat, and he wrote to ask whether I might visit his churches and talk to them about creation care. Frankly, I was happy about his invitation, but also quite overwhelmed. I couldn't kid myself that I knew anything at all about how creation care looks in a context so different from my own, in a place I had never visited, among people whose interests and needs I didn't know. But on the other hand, those of you who have traveled internationally know that going where you are invited is far more meaningful than going as a tourist. So after a few conversations with him and other people, I went, as you can see from this picture where I stand out quite a bit. These three churches where I spoke with Tom's help as a translator welcomed me very kindly. I also visited a dispensary, a small hospital in the area that I will say more about in a moment. Reverend Tom wanted his churches to plant trees in the Kisumu area, which had been badly disforested. So wherever we went that week, Tom would buy tree seedlings in the marketplace and host a tree planting, and everyone, I mean, everyone, whether prepared for it or not, participated. The two elders are planting Gravellia, and I am planting a Lutea tree. We all got into the soil to help plant trees in the churchyards. On the fourth day, Tom and I left Kisumu in a Matatu, a bus, and when we got as far as we could, we took a three-wheeled motorized tuk-tuk. And finally, two teenagers on motorcycles picked us up to ride a dirt road up the mountain to visit the Africa Inland Church's 100-year-old dispensary in the district of Nyakach. Halfway up that winding dirt road with a teenage biker, I found myself thinking, "I'm having the time of my life. I hope we don't die." We arrived here. This 1906 British-built facility was serving more than 8,000 residents of the western edge of Kenya's Rift Valley. It was in dire need of renovation and expansion. Here's the front of the building as it looked in, and you can, I hope, read their amazing mission, grounded in Scripture, and the long list of services they were offering. You can also see some of the needed renovations, although from this angle, you can't see the metal roof, which leaked and needed a complete replacement. Tom and the dispensary staff took me all around the facility explaining its needs. I had no idea what could be done, but I took notes. And even the big bosses got into the soil and planted trees. Seeing Tom's interest in tree planting and hearing about how much it was needed, I asked him if it were possible for them to grow their own seedlings instead of having to buy them. He said, "Yes, they could do that on the grounds of the bishop's office in Kisumu." I don't know if he asked the bishop, but it happened. So when I went home, I gave a presentation at First Presbyterian Church in Jeffersonville, Indiana, where I was Green Team leader and adult church school teacher, and right away, two things happened. First, the Green Team began fundraising for the tree nursery. Somebody made this beautiful poster of an acacia tree, and we filled it with pledges. By World Communion Sunday, we were ready to send $900 to the Africa Inland Church, and the nursery was planted. Second, some of you might know Carissa Harold, who works for Presbyterian Women in Louisville. She told me about a PW Thank Offering Grant we could apply for on the dispensary's behalf. So we did, and we received $50,000 to cover more than two-thirds of its renewal budget. You'll notice on these lists how basic some of the items are and also how thrifty this budget is. I was becoming more and more impressed with what the AIC could do with a little support. I loved it that the nurses wanted motorcycles so they could make house calls. And that tall tree that's now growing by the new gate was from a seedling that we planted that first day in 2016. As a result of these renovations, the dispensary was upgraded to a regional health facility. Kenya's government began supplying pharmaceuticals and accepting insurance through it, and even built a paved road to it. So next time, we won't die going back. So the seed money from PW helped unleash far more resources for the clinic. Meanwhile, with the funds raised by First Pres in Jeffersonville, work began on seedbeds at the bishop's office in Kisumu. After sowing, the workers mulched with grass. They used a large plastic water tank to collect rainwater and salvage cement bags from construction sites for planting. The seedlings are started in the nursery. The seedlings are started in the nursery, and when they're ready for transplant, they're given to schools, hospitals, churches, and farmers. The recipients are taught how to tend the trees, and the nursery checks back with them to see how the trees are growing. I'm told they have a ninety percent survival rate, which is more than I can say for trees I've planted at home. Here, Gravellia seedlings are being loaded into the back of a car. The schools with animals give back manure for seedling fertilizer. And here, they're teaching schoolchildren how to plant their trees and how to sow more seeds so they can create additional gardens at school and at their homes. These are fourth and fifth graders in a school of about three thousand students. In two thousand nineteen, God's Green Resourceful Earth, as the program came to be called, purchased two tents and one hundred chairs to offer larger-scale training for farmers and community members. They had three events before the program was interrupted by COVID, but now they're beginning to use them again when they can find the transportation to carry them. Otherwise, they use church buildings or teach outdoors. The elderly have gotten in on it. This is a recent event with members of the Alara Church. This is Mr. Justice Oyamo, who is eighty-nine years old. He has thirteen grandchildren for whom he wants to help build a better life. In the group picture on the right is Mr. Francis Omer, who is ninety years old. They planted one hundred trees that day along the fence line of the church's property. There is a lot of malaria in Kenya, and when quinine used to be used to treat it, it would sometimes cause deafness. Several years ago, Tom learned American Sign Language and started a congregation for the deaf. Here are members of this congregation planting trees. The man in the blue shirt is Boaz, ninety-two years old. They planted two hundred trees in their compound that day and then held a celebration. Here, they're training pastors on the advantages of growing trees along with poultry, beekeeping, creating a sustainable income, and cultivating indigenous drought-resistant vegetables such as cow peas and spider net. Most of these pastors are also farmers. With the training, they receive trees to plant. And here are sacks of greens planted up to demonstrate what can be done in a very small space, even on a veranda, apartment building. These collard greens, called Tsukuma wiki, are very basic to diets there. They grow year-round, and even the poorest can afford to eat this almost daily. These are some of the statistics for seedlings grown and distributed. This year, they have long waiting lists of schools and others who would like to have them. And here are some more numbers. They recently made connections with several governmental and non-governmental agencies in Kenya, who are now giving them both guidance and seeds. And they leased another acre and a half that will expand their operations tenfold. They're relying on small cars to transport the seedlings for planting all over the surrounding area. Tom has been hoping for a while now to purchase a used van or truck to transport the seedlings and bring in manure and soil and to take their tent and chairs for training events. That is the greatest need right now, and beyond that, the money to buy seeds and supplies for fruit trees. All this came from one tenuous connection that Tom made, thanks to the Presbyterians for Earth Care and Presbyterian Women. It's one of many examples of which wealthy people simply don't need to go in and tell people in developing nations what to do or even do it for them. They know exactly what to do, but often lack the funding to make it happen. A relatively small amount of money from here can work large miracles there. Reverend Tom, or rather Bishop Ochuka, as he is now, is attending this conference virtually from Kisumu. I'm hoping that a year from now, next fall, we can bring a small group of interested Americans to visit the Africa Inland Church in Kisumu to learn more about the work they're doing. Even though Tom and his congregations are very poor, they care deeply about people who are even poorer than themselves, as well as for the health of Kisumu's land and water. Any conservation work that draws down the carbon in our atmosphere, no matter where it takes place, benefits us all. If this little introduction to earth care in a corner of Kenya has inspired you, please let me know, because I will be happy to connect you with ways you can get involved. And you can also find a sign-up sheet for that at the book table if you want more information. In short, this is not the time in history for us to build bigger barns and store up wealth for ourselves. Instead, this is the moment when we who have extra can make sure we use the bounty to benefit not only ourselves, but our neighbors and the health of the planet. By this time, you have probably heard what the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change has been saying. In two thousand eighteen, they told us we have just until two thousand thirty to reduce our carbon pollution by forty-five percent to stay within a tolerable future and just until two thousand fifty to stop burning fossil fuels altogether. We are halfway to two thousand thirty and nowhere near our goals. This is not a time for us to sit on our hands or on our money if we can use it to help assure our own and other people's survival. You likely know already about the unprecedented trifecta of climate legislation the Biden administration has passed, the bipartisan infrastructure bill and the CHIPS Act, and most importantly, the Inflation Reduction Act. There was a workshop about that this morning, which includes broad provisions for underserved communities to access renewable energy and energy conservation. Reducing pollution in poor communities also benefits economies and health. But reducing pollution anywhere, whether among the rich or among the poor, helps ensure life everywhere. And that's why it's important for us to take advantage of every tax credit in the Inflation Reduction Act that we can. There are numerous workshops about this this week, and I'll be leading one tomorrow morning on moving toward net-zero energy use in our homes. I don't know how many of you have read this book, Octavia Butler's dystopic nineteen ninety-three novel, Parable of the Sower. It takes place in a post-apocalyptic world that has been deeply altered by both climate change and social inequality. As the novel opens, the ultra-rich have both isolated themselves and found ways to enslave everyone they can. Even people who are relatively poor are living in gated communities, mortally and justifiably terrified of the people left on the outside who are clamoring to come in. Ironically for us, this story begins in the year two thousand twenty-four, when her gated neighborhood is destroyed. The young protagonist, Lauren Olamina, travels with a small and growing group of people seeking to establish a community based on mutual aid and trust. Whether that community will survive is still an open question, as the book concludes. To me, this story illustrates dimensions of what could happen in our own future if we fail to pair our environmental action with a strong current of environmental justice. So now is the moment to consider what our wealth will profit us, mortal beings. Tomorrow afternoon's Bible study will concern another paired population group, the young and the old among us, what we need and what we can give one another. I look forward to seeing you all there. We are at five after, so I don't know that we have any time for discussion. Bruce, that's your call. Sound okay? Are y'all tired? Yes, sir.
Individual projects are fantastic, and they should go on in their demonstrations, their signs of hope of themselves. And the, I just feel the imperative on all of us to figure out how individual projects are replicated. I mean, one village growing trees and a hundred villages growing trees, one church getting green, and twenty churches in one county getting green, and so on. And we just, it, sometimes we just feel like we've reached our limit with our one project. But from the, from the inception, if we can see that each project is a seed to replicate and move and so forth, it's just such a critical piece of the puzzle. Otherwise, we kind of feel fat and happy with our cute little project. Millions are starving, right? So.
Yeah.
Hi. I can add to what you've just said. I spent the last two weeks of May in the, on the Nyakach Plateau in Kenya, yes, with a group that started out with a pediatrician friend of mine who started a hospital and a school. This was, it's on the Bethlehem Home School, is the name of it. It's a small little area. But anyway, she started the hospital and brings doctors and educators over with her during the summer. And then during the, during the year, Pastor Habil, who is the Tom pastor, the same as equivalent Pastor Tom, you know, carries out the questions and the needs of the people and through an organization known as Straw to Bread. And I have a T-shirt, so I'll wear it tomorrow. So, but Straw to Bread started out, it's been in existence for about ten years, but it builds on the same model in Kenya, and the people there are just, just absolutely marvelous. And it's, they just now started extending their ministry to environmental justice. And they have gone to the ECHO Farm Global Auxiliary in Tanzania to get training on, on these various agricultural techniques to defeat the devastation of drought and all these curious, you know, wonderful, terrible, you know, conditions that they have from year to year. So I'll, I'll talk about that, I'd love to talk about it with you. But anyway, it's another organization that has taken this model as well.
Yeah, let's move on. Take a break and we'll see you in workshops.